For the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Okay.
Move to approve the minutes of March 14th?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions? If not, we will move on to resolutions. Andy Conrad, and I believe we have Dan here.
Morning.
Good morning.
Happy spring.
Happy spring.
That's what we got. One resolution for your consideration today, and the necessity to close Granger Road between Beach Road and Terra Way. And then our weekly minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Dan.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have sanitary engineer, and I believe Scott's going to present for Jeremy today.
Thank you. Yeah, Jeremy lost his voice, so.
Jeremy usually opens with a joke, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. So I'm going to go ahead and present the sanitary, and then I'll just present the finance, if that's okay.
That's good.
So sanitary's resolution is authorizing sanitary engineer to purchase office furniture for the sanitary engineering department through state purchasing. Total cost is $116,202.16. And then for finance, the first resolution we have is an increase in appropriations in various funds and accounts.
Wait, should I stop you? Shouldn't we do a resolution for sanitary first?
Okay, I'll move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
It's okay. Okay, so first resolution finances amending appropriations in various funds and accounts. This is being done through the increase or decrease of those appropriations. The second resolution is authorizing expenditure adjustments in various funds. The third resolution is authorizing cash transfers in various funds. This is for the 40 services that were provided. The fourth resolution is the creation of a sheriff's emergency management agency wellness fund. This is for the period of July 1st, 2022, through December 31st of 2024, the amount of $46,511. Fifth resolution is the creation of the sheriff's body camera redaction software fund. This is for the period of July 2022 through June 30th of 2023. This is for $16,490. Sixth resolution is the creation of a drug task force, office criminal justice services justice assistance grant. This is for the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st of 2023. This is for $41,922.18. Seventh resolution is awarding a bid for 6,800 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline. This is being awarded to Port petroleum for $2.18 per gallon. Eighth resolution is allowing expenses of county officials. And the final resolution is authorizing the payment of invoices in the amount of $1,451,755.5.
Move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, next up, we have Bethany Detner, economic development.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one resolution for you today, approving a community reinvestment area agreement and a community reinvestment area compensation agreement with Naughty Dog Holdings LLC. I would note that this is for the construction of a 35,000-square-foot manufacturing facility in Sharon Township with an investment of $4.3 million. The tenant will be Progressive Molding Technologies.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Just two more quick things. Next week, I'll be back in front of you for approval of all the minutes from the housing council meetings for this year. And then I believe the first week of April, we'll have another CRA project from Montville Township, so.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks.
Okay, next up, we have Holly Murin, human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in sanitary and one in finance. Four rate increases, two in records retention, and two at job and family services. One appointment cancel in sanitary and one resignation in finance. Second resolution is approving an agreement with Matchup LLC DBA move spring for the provision of administrative services for the county wellness program.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll get you after. Okay, department updates. Richard?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So for the month of February, our residential's down some, but the commercial was pretty strong. So that brought us back up to a pretty good amount of work. But yeah, the new homes are still averaging right around 361,000. And new home starts for the year is down a little bit, kind of a three-year low. New home starts in February were 21 compared to 27, 27, and 25 over the last couple of years. So they're down a little bit, not too bad. Second page, our monthly receipts again were buoyed up pretty good by the, you know, pretty strong commercial work still that was coming through. Third page, year-to-date receipts are just hanging in there at about 2.5% above last year. Fourth page is residential receipts by township, or residential permits by township. And so true with the fifth page also. Commercial permits on the sixth page by township. And the last page, of course, captures the commercial work and the projects that were permitted in February. Pretty good amount there. So it's kept us busy. Other than that, we're very pleased with our new building inspector. He shows good promise. We think that he's going to work out real well. And essentially, that's all I have for you this morning.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
You want to know about review times?
I always do.
Commercial's been hanging in there good, about 21 days, actually maybe a little less. Residential oddly slipped some out to about five days. Oops.
That's still great.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, but it's still doing pretty good. Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have Christina Fazio, EMA director. And instead, we have Chuck.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chuck, good morning.
Pleasure to be with you this morning. My name's Chuck Stever. I'm the coordinator for Medina County All Hazards Team. And Director Fazio asked me to do the update for you today, and I'm going to pass these down as we go. So you have a copy. For those that aren't aware, the Medina County All Hazards Team is made up from police fire and EMS providers throughout Medina County. And the disciplines included in that are fire investigation, hazmat, rope confined space, structural collapse, trench and water rescue. What I gave you was a synopsis of our '22 season. And as you can see, I've got a number of callouts for the All Hazards. EMAs are also on there, and the CART teams are included in that. Once again, in 2022, Fire Investigation Unit, of course, had the highest number of callouts throughout the county, and that's historically been correct for the All Hazards Team. They're the busiest unit within that team, followed by hazmat. Again, those numbers seem to be holding steady as we go into '23. Fire Investigation has been toned out a number of times this year. And I'll cover some more about Fire Investigation at the end of this. Just wanted to cover what we consider to be our big wins for All Hazard in 2022. First of all, we spent some time diligently reshaping the hazmat physicals for our hazmat team members to make sure we were compliant with the Technical Advisory Committee for the State of Ohio on hazmat, and also to meet NFPA standards. It's a concern when you have police fire and EMS personnel that are subjack and exposed to those chemicals that they deal with on a daily basis. And I know that's on everybody's forefront after the East Palestine, East Palestine train derailment. You know, it's kind of in the forefront right now. We worked through a process with Cleveland Clinic, their employee health program, to solidify, to make sure we were compliant with those standards. And got that package put together and started through that process. So we've had our first set of hazmat technicians go through that health screening procedure. And that'll be a legacy program. The billing and everything is automatic now. They go in knowing what is going to be included in a physical when they arrive. Everything's pre-planned for them to make the process easy for them, because they're all coming from other departments. When they leave then, they'll be provided another physical before they go. So we have a legacy tracking of those technicians that are in the program. And again, that's to be compliant with both the Ohio TAC and NFPA standards. The other big wins for 2022, we rolled out a records management system, which was kind of important when we're trying to track so many people. We're about 70 people total in that system now. And I'm sure Holly appreciates that. She tracks a lot of employees. We, All Hazard Advisory Committee approved a software program for us called the Lad Tech that allows us to do scheduling, to do even maintenance requests, to track everybody's certifications, our inventory of all our equipment, and then the hours that they provide to All Hazards. And it seems like a simplified thing, but when you're trying to track especially issued equipment and certifications, we have to make sure that everybody is compliant under NFPA standards, maintains the proper certifications. Many of those have renewals on them. It's important we track that. County requires that we track their driver's license. That's in there, the Department of Public Safety search. So in our world, for the All Hazards Team, that was a big win last year. We appreciated the support. It comes at a cost to subscribe to that, but very well worth that effort to get that done. And we were fully functional in '22, so it's a huge help, at least from my desk. It makes life a lot easier to keep track of everybody. The, as we go into '23, some things that are on our agenda. I said I'd circle back around the Fire Investigation Unit. We've had concerns, and we've been diligently working to make sure we are providing the proper equipment for those individuals to do their job. They're usually called out when a fire is still underway, before the suppression activity has stopped. And they get there, and there is still a lot of carcinogens in the air. And in a fire service right now, that's one of the big topics, or a number of cancer-related illnesses and deaths in the fire service. So we are working pretty hard to make sure that that unit has equipment, not only to get to the scene, to protect themselves while we're there, but also be able to come back and get that equipment decon properly. And so we're taking steps to make sure that we are compliant, again, with NFPA standards. And a lot of that goes with our building adjustments down at Chippewa Lake to make sure that we have extractors to clean their gear. Lafayette Township stepped in. They had a trailer that they no longer had a use for and donated that specifically to All Hazards for the Fire Investigation Unit. So we're in the process of retrofitting that so they can deploy that and have ability to clean up on site. We've also purchased them SCBA breathing equipment, so they're not relying on their home departments to bring that gear with them. So we look forward to making that operational in 2023. From the water rescue team, we are still, that was the last team that was instituted, and I happen to also be the team lead for that one. So I wear two hats there. We are trying to build our capabilities out in the county. We currently have swift water and flood capabilities, along with side scan sonar. If you're not familiar with that, that's what we use primarily for recovery operations. And the last two pieces of the puzzle we were trying to put together was an ROV, which is much like a drone, only it goes under the water instead of on top. We applied for a grant. Director Fazio and Assistant Director Now put together a grant for us. It did get approved. That ROV is on order. We're waiting. Those funds should be released here shortly. We're hoping it's been almost a two-year process. It was a $40,000 grant. We were about $15,000 short of where we wanted to be for that piece of equipment. We wanted to include a navigation system with it so we could track where it was at. Many of the ROVs that are out there don't have that capability. And Brunswick City graciously stepped in and said they would provide the additional $15,000 in grant funding to order that extra capability. So we look forward to having that in hand. I hope by summer, we have that in the county and are training on it. It's going to take a little time to get up to speed. And then the last portion of the water team we're building on in '23, we hope to be operational in '24, is our dive component. We currently have an agreement with Wayne County, Worcester Township in particular, Chief Carroll's department. If we need dive assets in Medina County, we call them. We, for a while, provided swift water capabilities to Wayne County while they provided dive capabilities to ours. They have since built out their swift water capabilities. We have not completed our dive capabilities yet, so we are still relying on them if we have an incident. They are even on our paging system. So if we get a water call and it goes out to All Hazards, Chief Carroll gets that page, and he and I then very quickly connect to make sure if we need them to start this way, so to speak. And they've been hugely helpful. We had an incident last year in Valley City of fatality. There was an individual went through the ice, and then we had the aircraft crash in Wadsworth. And use them a lot on that call to recover not only individual, but also piece of the aircraft for the NTSB investigation. So that was a day-long operation. As part of that, we applied for a grant. Dive equipment and dive training is hugely expensive. And we applied for a grant through the Heller Foundation in Sharon Township. We applied for $40,000. I thought that would be enough to buy four sets of dive gear, much to my surprise and joy, I guess. I was on Boston teaching a class, Boston Marine Patrol, and got a call from Chief Haas. That foundation decided to give us $100,000 instead of 40. When does that happen, right? I thought something was wrong with the text. So I stopped the class and said, I got to make a phone call here. They did provide, they thought the $40,000 was our needs for today, and it was. They wanted to make sure we could sustain into the future and do more training and buy more equipment as we needed it. So they graciously gave us $100,000. It is in hand. It is accounted for and part of the funding now. We have ordered our first round of four sets of dive gear. We've got a few more components to add to that. And we have a plan in place after Labor Day of this year, we will start that dive training rotation. And as you can imagine, we have folks with all levels of dive training on the All Hazards Team. So we need to, we're actually going to in-house sponsor a public safety diver course and bring all that level of training from none to a lot together. Our plan is to be operational by fall of 2024 with that. And that'll be the final component for the water team. So we're pretty excited for that. It'll be good for Medina County, good for our residents to have that. And I always tell people, in any ice rescue, that is a dive operation over a matter of time, right? You know, a lot of our ice rescues, if we're not there in a timely fashion and can make that rescue, many times we need that dive component, because that is still technically a rescue in cold water. There is an opportunity for resuscitation there. So that's something that we are very anxious to get our hands on, to provide to the citizens of Medina County. So with that, unless you have any questions, thank you for the time, and good to see you all.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, good job. Thanks, Chuck. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment? All righty, we will move on. We will move on to discussion session. Scott, you have anything?
I do. So I know Commissioner Hambley was asking about the Heatherhedge project.
Oh, yeah.
So just quickly, they are about 99% completed with the construction documents for the renovation of the building itself. They're almost complete with the shed and the parking lot. They expect to have the bid documents ready to go first week of April for summer construction. And it'll probably be about a six- to seven-month construction period. So they are moving along. We've spent approximately $32,000, almost $33,000 to date out of the $800,000. So there's about $767,000 left. I have not yet seen an estimate on the cost for the project. So that will probably be coming, hopefully, within the next week. Chris can take a look at it and take it from there. So also want to let you know, I met last week with Prosecutor's Office on the lease with the city.
Yes.
So Tom Karas hopefully will have something to me this week that I can get to you. He's also working on a lease with the Cleveland Clinic for the morgue. So I'm hoping to have that to you also here.
Yeah, that one's been a while.
It has been a while, yeah. Yeah, I've been, it has been a while. But hopefully, I'll have both of those two this week, that you can take a look at it. And then next week, discuss it, hopefully, and then we can get it back to the city. So, okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Bethany, anything else? Richard? Chris? Denise? Holly? Steven? Steve?
Yeah, we have a letter of the Boston Road Interchange. I think when you had met with Brunswick City, they were asking, inquiring, and I know they had likewise passed a resolution. I think you all received copies of that. Just pretty straightforward. I know it's slated to go, House Bill 23 as amended, and the substitute bill that the Senate does as amended. It's expected to go out of the committee tomorrow. My understanding is it'll be on the floor at least Thursday, and then they'll, non-concurring, then have to go in a conference committee. So we need to obviously get this quickly to the, not only Senator Robynchuck and Representative Miller and Representative Ray, but also the Chair of the Senate Committee. And if we can just get it out to them, it'll just add to the other entities likewise have indicated opposition to.
There's way more opposition than support, correct?
I'll say that's accurate.
Yes.
Based on what I've read in the testimony and so forth, yes. It's, but this is, Representative Patton from Strongsville, this is every General Assembly since, I don't know, about a decade or two, whether it was in the Senate or in the House, has always passed, tried to get it in a transportation budget. And this time was able to get it out of the House. So at this point, I continually used to push forward a couple of years ago. When he didn't get it out, Speaker Cup conducted a meeting that I attended up in Strongsville for the county. Likewise, obviously, Strongsville is an advocate for this, Brunswick and Medina County, because of its adverse impact on the residential area, has concerns about it. And so I think we'll just, it'll continue. But something does need to be done in terms of the traffic on 82, from 82 and 71 during rush hours. And of course, I know ODOT has already indicated eventually 303 is likewise going to continue to load up. So I think that there has to be some way to address the traffic issues between that, that's more amenable to the concerns of the communities.
I think that's the key with this, and I appreciate you putting that together too, because I think it hits that nail on the head, that the appropriate solutions should come from the local communities collectively, collaboratively, not from Columbus.
Not from a mandate, yeah.
Right, right. And so I think that's, I think that's the key here. And I think it looks great, and I'm ready to sign it.
Okay, all right, good.
I am also.
Okay. The other thing I would bring up, and I just want to thank Aaron, I know that you met with Brunswick City over a week ago, but there was the news report that actually at least provided in writing what their concerns were. And I would note, at least on record, that their concern is, in terms of the membership on an EMA executive committee, they would like an additional member. And they've said they're going to resist approving that agreement until such time they obviously would get that addressed. Actually, the best way for them to get that concern addressed is to approve the agreement. Because there's the opportunity, once the countywide advisory group was formed, according to the law and the agreement, they would appoint an executive committee, and then from there, the executive committee can add the additional members. In which case Brunswick can certainly make their case as to why they want an additional voting member, even though they're about 15% of the local funding component. And I guess then they can make their case to the other subdivisions. But that would be the best opportunity for them to do that, rather than holding off approving it. So that's, I guess I'll, I think that ought to be duly noted in the public record. So, and that's all I've got.
Aaron?
I don't have much more to add. I have been making the rounds. I have visited both Sharon Township and, most recently, Harrisville Township for introduction purposes. But also, both times, the EMA amended agreement did come up. And so I'm just kind of working to see that those things get implemented. But I think we're making good progress on that. I think in any time when you're soliciting feedback from the communities, you should expect to hear it. And so we're hearing it.
Yes.
Good.
But I think, yeah, I think it's important to get that countywide version of the agreement updated and compliant. So that's what we're working to do.
Okay. All right, so we're going to go on to.
I think Skip's here.
Yeah, Skip, you are up.
Please.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Chris, morning back. The Kate Schatz, the Eligibility Administrator for Medina County Job and Family Services are here this morning. Wanted to share with you some plans to kind of like streamline the county commissioners' homeless fund. A little recap is probably in order here. So in the early 2000s, Medina County Housing Network formed. And part of what we wanted to do as a network was to address some of the emergency housing needs of residents here in Medina County. Just as a general reminder, I know you all here know this, but for those that might be watching, there are no entitlements, federal or state entitlements, for folks who need affordable housing, whether you're homeless or just having rent burden, no entitlements at all. Yet, if you go to Job and Family Services, they're able to assist with things like food insecurity, or if you're poor and need medical attention. Those are entitlements. None exist for affordable housing. So the network worked to secure resources. The Adam Board was able to build an 11-unit building on Northland Drive to address folks with a federally defined disability and house them because they were facing a housing crisis. So the commissioners at that time, and I'm not quite sure what year this started. I'm going with.
2008.
Okay, I went with early 2000s, because I remember the network formed 2005. Commissioner Hambley was its first chair some time ago. And we were able to get the commissioners along those, in that general timeframe, 2008, to set up a fund for folks, kind of as a last resort fund, to put people up either in hotels or provide security deposits or things like that, to avoid homelessness. I mean, that was the intent of it. But it was weirdly designed. So the housing authority was the point of entry, come visit us. So that's one point of the triangle. The next point of the triangle was to make sure that folks in Kate's shop would approve that, and then we would pay the hotel or the security deposit, whatever. And then we would send the bill to JFS, who would send it over to the auditor's office, who would pay us. No one's going to think that's efficient. So we've come up with some ways to possibly make this a little bit more streamlined. Concurrent with that, earlier this year, the Emergency Food and Shelter Program, which is a FEMA-funded entity, comes to Medina County. This year, Medina County got a larger allocation. And what was really nice was JFS sits on that, as does the housing authority and others, but so does Feeding Medina County. And we came up with a creative collaborative way where folks that are facing housing crises not only will get helped, whether it's a hotel stay, or whether it's security deposit, or transportation, or some of these other things we've agreed to, Feeding Medina County is going to make sure that they get food. And so we've got a little more holistic approach to this. And as the commissioners know, we're working on an emergency housing shelter. Doing all this collaboratively will allow us now to collect that data, not only assist the people who need to be assisted, but collect the data to do the work and properly size and set up for the service provisions for the shelter. Our primary recommendations for you today, for your consideration, would be, and Aaron, if you'd be so kind, seems that's the.
That's my role.
And based on location, right? What Kate and I've been able to pull together is a list of how the program currently works and what we propose to be the difference. And the intent behind this is, we're going to take that, and I have one for Rhonda, I have one for Scott, and I have, I already gave Chris one.
Sure.
The idea behind this is, we're going to combine the EFSP dollars. The Housing Authorities Board is considering an allocation of $25,000 to go with the 45 from EFSP. Commissioners have already committed $10,000 to this pot. And so we're going to cobble this together. And then JFS does its own programming through the PRC program. And we want to mirror, to the extent possible, how we help folks in need. And so the recommendations are pretty straightforward and basic. The primary one being, instead of this triangular approach to administrative stuff, it's going to go directly to the housing authorities. So that would require, I believe, action on the part of the commissioners. This program goes back to directors, I think we figured out. This goes back to Mead Wilkins from JFS's days. Yeah. So we're, I think it's time to update or modernize our approach to this. The housing authority, as you know, is the gatekeeper for all emergency housing programs. And then the last piece of this puzzle is, we're working to train what we're calling referral partners. And these are the nonprofits and the churches who have been very, very active. active in helping folks facing crisis, but they're just kind of writing checks and doing stuff, and it hasn't been really coordinated and collaborated. We're doing that now. We have training that's getting established so that everyone will work on diversionary tactics, making sure that the folks actually get referred to us. We can do the data collection, we'll do the serving, and then the PRC clients, we treat exactly the same. So that's the basis of what we're here for today, but we're happy to entertain questions from a program perspective, how maybe JFS slightly is different than what the PRC program, than what this is. But in essence, we're trying to streamline and consolidate the program to the extent possible. Questions, concerns, celebrations?
No, I would note that actually you're increasing the eligibility from 150% federal poverty to 200%, which obviously makes sense, given what's been going on economically, inflation, everything else that's going on, I'm sure. That, that makes a lot of sense to me, and otherwise, you're keeping a lot of the provisions the same.
Yeah, just trying to make the administrative process a little simpler. The other piece, the 200% of poverty, that's what EFSP calls for, so we think any other federal funding, local funding ought to be exactly the same.
I'd agree.
Yeah, and also the PRC is 200% FPL now, so it aligns all three.
Yeah, lines all up, okay. Great.
And you're, the, the.
Data from this is going to inform some of the decisions to come on the shelter. Can you speak to that at all, or is that premature? Sure. So what, folks that we serve, that we enter into what's called the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, and that is, the Housing Authority is the gatekeeper for that in Medina County. So folks that present as homeless that we do an intake on, that, their information, it's a long form that gets filled out, we collect tons of data on them, so we're trying to identify the root causes of the, of the crisis, and then that, it gets entered into a database statewide, so the state can also look at it, but then you can make out reports specific to our jurisdiction. So then we'll have a better understanding of what the mix might be in the population for shelter, for instance, men versus women, children. As I've shared here before, I'm a dog lover, there's going to be dog area, there's going to be pets allowed at, at the shelter when we build this, so. And as I think I've shared with you guys before, the challenge right now, we're looking very seriously at the Housing Authority offices being the shelter location. We think it's ideal. It's across the street from JFS. As you know, JFS in the lower level now has community action. You've got Veteran Services, you've got the Adden Board and the Office for Old Adults in the Human Services Building. It's a wonderful campus for the location.
Not to mention a transit hub.
Yes, yeah, and, and it's on the loop. It's on the loop. The challenge, of course, will be for the Housing Authority to find adequate space, so we're out there looking for about 10,000 square feet of office space, and hopefully, I asked Kate yesterday, can you get any more room at JFS?
We might have one cubicle.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm used to a little better digs than that, but, but that's what we have for you this morning. Happy again, any other questions, concerns?
No, I think it's a great idea. So we just need to change, make the changes. Do we have to make changes in the PRC as well? So basically, it's compliant with that. Okay, got it.
All right, and I think there's an administrative, but I'll turn to you all.
Right, well, Chris, but yeah, I'm all in. I think it's a good, good idea.
Thank, thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Let's see, I entertain a mo, I would like to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of, to consider employment and compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?